Okay, we're gonna open up a meeting. Today is the 16th of February 2021, 3 o'clock meeting. We're gonna hear the administrative appeal submitted by Jeffrey Dulcetto. Is that correct, sir?
I Dulcetto, that's fine.
Dulcetto, okay. And Sherri Culver?
Yes.
Okay, you're appealing the septic design that was submitted by Mrs. Pearson?
Building permit number 95, which does have a septic design in it, yes.
Okay, all right. And let's see, in order for this, we need at least four members of the ZBA to be present, and we do. We have myself, Rain Cynical, Roland Waterhouse, Dennis Long, and Lois Mischu.
Hey!
All right.
Brandy. You forgot Brandy.
And Brandy. Next office over. Okay, so we're gonna hear from the person filing the deal first, and we'll let you speak. And at the end of your statement, then we'll open up questions for the board members. It can be followed up by Mrs. Pearson's. And then from there, we'll hear Mrs. Pearson's side, and then same thing. We'll wait until she has spoken before we interrupt her with questions, all right? So just keep it, keep it flowing, so we're not talking over each other on Zoom. All right, so I'm making a motion to start the meeting. You have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Meeting is officially started. Okay, all right, let's continue on. We're gonna listen to the appeal. All right, so Mr. Dulcetto and Ms. Culver, go ahead.
Okay. I'm gonna read one a little bit here and then share my screen of the septic of this survey plan. What I have to read is only about five or six minutes. So we'll keep it brief. Good afternoon, Town Administrator, members of the zoning board of appeals, building code enforcer, fellow Acton residents and legal representatives. Thank you for holding this administrative appeal public hearing and for allowing us to speak. We feel this matter is very important. I am Jeffrey Dulcetto, and this is my wife Sherri Culver. For 32 years, we have owned the property at One Rafferty Drive and plan to retire within four years or less, and will be spending much more time in the community of Acton. We are most definitely a butters. There is a property line of ours that touches the road, that touches the other side of the property at Lot 1, map 113. And furthermore, the the stream that goes through Lot 1 on map 113 then travels through our property. I'm now gonna share my screen. If I may, and okay, I'm sharing a survey plan that's of our property from 2014. Can most people see that okay?
Yep.
All right, this is, this is the full picture. Our property is marked in the black solid line. Langley Shores comes down the hill right here and off to the left, making a nice box in the property we're talking about, Lot 1. The, this is the culvert under Langley. So what I'm gonna now show is an expansion of the, what's labeled the brook that goes through our property before it deposits itself in Great East Lake. But you can see where our house is situated. This is where the brook is, and these are where other lot lines and other properties are located and so forth. This is an expansion now. Again, here's Langley Shore Drive making that L turn. Lot 113, sorry, Lot 1 in map 113 is here. I can expand this a little bit. This is the culvert that goes underneath Langley Shore Drive. Our neighboring property here, it's, it goes through there for about maybe 12 feet, 6 to 12 feet. But then for the entire length of this 185 feet borderline, it goes through our property as a major brook, if you will, brook stream, whatever it wanted to be called it. The point is, there's no way to stop what goes through this. Whatever Mother Nature sends down the hill, it's going through this. And it's not stopped by anything. It then goes straight into Great East Lake. That's just the way it is. No laws, no variances, nothing will stop that. 11 months out of the year, it may be fine, but when that storm happens, the things that will come through there are only known by nature, and those will all end up in Great East Lake. So Lot 1 has a stream that bisects the lower third of the lot in roughly the north-south direction. After leaving Lot 1 in a south-to-north direction, it enters our property. It enters our property in a well-defined ravine and then into Great East Lake. You can see this on the survey enlargement that I am presenting here, and I've given a copy to the Land Use Secretary. This past summer, there were at least two significant rainstorms where 2 to 3 feet of water was rushing down through the ravine. This water came from up the hill through the property in question and traveled down through the stream from Lot 1. Slightly over 10 years ago, a severe rainstorm sent an immense amount of water rushing down the hill. The result was that a couple of truckloads of sand were deposited into Great East Lake along with sizable chunks of tar from the road. Some of that water would have flowed across Lot 1. What happens up the hill from us most directly impacts our property and our shorefront where we swim and get our water from. Today's hearing is administrative appeal of the building permit. The setbacks for the location of the septic wastewater disposal field as listed in the permit are not permissible in the shoreline zone. Acton's own zoning ordinances state so. Specifically, the granting of a building permit by then code enforcer Ken Paul issued on December 30th, 2020, building permit number 20/21-95. The building permit stipulates, at the top under the map and lot number in bold font, must maintain a 75-foot setback to the tributary stream located within the shoreline zone, end of quote. Lot 1 on map 113 is a non-conforming lot partially within the shoreline zone. The non-conforming lot definition is in section 1.4.4 of the Acton zoning ordinance. Lot 1 on map 113 is a, is in the shoreline zone district as seen in paragraphs 4.3.2.1. I read that definition here now. Quote, "The shoreline district shall include the land area located within the shoreline zone, which includes land located within 200 and 250 feet horizontal distance of the normal high waterline of any great pond or river or within 250 feet horizontal distance of upland edge of wetland or within 75 feet horizontal distance of the normal line of a stream." Okay, why this matters? The property of Lot 1 is partially within the shoreline zone, specifically the portion that the proposed septic disposal field is on. Building permit clearly states that it is granted with the stipulation that it must be, remain 75 feet back from the stream because it is in the shoreline zone. The plans submitted within the application include a septic waste disposal field that encroaches on the 75-foot stream buffer zone down to within 29 feet. The plans show the septic system within the shoreline zone. Soil will be disturbed within the shoreline buffer zone, and additional fill will be required within the septic disposal field.
Or yourself.
The local town and town officials are under no obligation to grant the permit, even if the state gives a variance. Local ordinances can be more stringent, and in this case, we feel that ordinances are more stringent and they should be followed. Our understanding is that no first-time variance can be given to a non-conforming lot to make it conforming. Essentially, by approving the permit that included the variance from the state, the permit is allowing local ordinances to be ignored with respect to staying away from a stream by 75 feet. Shoreland zone is for protection of the lake and water quality. Land occupied by Lot 1 on map 113 is a watershed for that system and the water from the land surrounding the area. Disturbing them will increase the possibility to negatively impact the lake. Should the above-ground wastewater treatment apparatus or the subsurface septic waste disposal field fail, as it might happen in a severe rainstorm, it would directly impact our property, especially if the 75-foot buffer zone is so greatly reduced. At best, contaminants will leach into and at worst, contaminants will be swept directly into Great East Lake. These ordinances are meant for the public good and to preserve natural resources for current and future residents. It seems totally against the spirit of, quote, "do no harm" to intentionally locate a new disposal field over 100 feet away from the proposed house and in the direction of the lake, thus crossing into the shoreline zone, not to mention that is too close to the stream. Our arguments for this. It is our contention that by giving a building permit for Lot 1 on map 113, Acton violated its own zoning ordinances. The building permit gives an implicit variance to allow the construction of a septic waste disposal field less than 75 feet back from the waterfront or stream in that case, this case. From Acton's own zoning ordinances, it is not permissible to grant a first-time variance to create structures like septic waste disposal field on a non-conforming lot within the shoreline zone and to disregard the 75-foot setback requirement from a stream in the shoreline zone. We've used two sections of Acton's own ordinances to support this assertion. On page 33 of the Acton zoning ordinance, the definition of variance and then when authorized, quote, "As used in this ordinance, a variance is authorized only for height, area, size of structures, size of yards, or open spaces. Establishment or expansion otherwise prohibited will not be allowed by variance, nor shall a variance be granted because of the presence of non-conformities in the zoning district or uses in adjoining zoning districts," end of quote. We interpret this to say that there can be no variance given that establishes or expands a use that would otherwise be prohibited. In these instances, variances cannot be granted simply because of non-conformities within the zoning district, which in the case, which in this case is the shoreline zone district. Lot 1 is a non-conforming lot, and a first-time variance should not be given because of existing non-conformities. While the information from plans about the proposed locations disposal field from the Department of Environmental Health seemingly allows the construction of a disposal field by ignoring the setback rule, sidelines, and steepness of the land, Acton's own laws prohibit the construction of the septic waste field, disposal field. Again, from the Acton's own zoning ordinance, establishment or expansion otherwise prohibited shall not be allowed by variance, nor shall a variance be granted because of presence of non-conformities in the zoning district. We feel this is enough for the Board of Appeals to rescind the granting of the building permit. We assert that the CEO signed, the CEO signed building permit is flawed. Notwithstanding the cover sheet statement that says, quote, "75 feet from all streams in the shoreline zone", it implies acceptance of the attached plan showing the septic field only 29 feet from the stream in the shoreline zone. Thus, in an indirect way, it allows a variance to build a septic system too close to a stream. In conclusion, there's a lot, sorry, there is a local obligation to do, to do no harm. The location of the proposed disposal field has a potential to do just that because of its location and design being so close to a stream. The local municipality is under no obligation to grant a permit, even if the state of Maine gives a variance for the location of the disposal field. Local ordinances are more stringent and do not allow changes to, quote, "waterfront setbacks." This is all clearly spelled out in Town of Acton zoning ordinance, Article 6, in section 6.6.2, in paragraph C2, under variance appeals. These ordinances are meant for the public good and to preserve natural resources for current and future residents. It seems totally against the spirit of "do no harm" to intentionally locate a new disposal field 100 feet away from a proposed house and in the direction of the lake, thus crossing into shoreline zone, not to mention again that it's too close to the stream. The flawed building permit clearly states that development must maintain a 75-foot setback to the tributary stream located within the shoreline zone. However, the plans attached to the permit include the construction of a septic wastewater disposal field only 29 feet from the stream. This is in conflict, this is in conflict with local laws and should never have been approved by the code enforcer, CEO at that time. We ask that the zoning board of appeals rescind building permit number 20/21-95 issued on December 30th, 2020. Thanks for listening.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. Okay, does anybody of the zoning appeals have any questions at all?
I got, I got a question. That, that stream, does that come across, come out of a culvert on the Langley Shore Road up on the
The answer to your question is yes. If you're still seeing my shared screen, I, this is the, the marking for a culvert. This is Langley Shore Drive here. I can go out.
Screen's not being shared, Jeff.
Oh, sorry.
Well, my, my question on that is, uh, that big washout that you were talking about, was that, was that the Patriot State Storm? I believe it was like '09, '08, '09? Is that, is that the one you're referring to when the hot top was in the, in the lake?
Yeah.
It was. Because, because the town road washed completely out. Some people, yeah, no, but the, it was like a 12, like a 12-foot stretch that was completely gone. I mean, that's probably where that all come from is what I'm saying. And the, and the second is, is the, the leach bed that's encroaching on the stream is, it's uphill. It's away from the lake. They put the leach bed away from the lake according to the separate septic design presented by Ken Gardner. So they're actually trying to get that wastewater farther up. And it, that's just pretty much it.
Actually, the leach field is closer to the lake than the house is.
That, that's not how it shows in on this design that I have in front of me. That's all.
Well, that's not the most current design then.
Then it wasn't submitted right then.
Closer to the lake and to Langley Shore. The house is located up the hill, and then there's a distance that the, it's being pumped to.
It gets pumped uphill. If that, you wouldn't need the pump unless it was going uphill.
That's not set up though.
That's not right.
Well, it is. It has a pump in it. It says right here on my print that it has a pump, and, and if it has a pump, it has to go uphill. Other than that, it'd work off gravity. And the water flows down. The only time you need a pump is if your leach bed is uphill from your septic tank. Other than that, you wouldn't need a pump because it just, it'd naturally go downhill. Water runs downhill.
Respectfully, sir, there were diagrams showing the septic up the hill and a building down the hill. That got changed. I believe Ken Gardner, when he did the septic design, the house is now up the hill, and the septic is now down the hill. And, and it, like, I think you mentioned on a knoll, but it's now down the hill. Thus, the septic is now in the shoreline zone while the house is back in the rural zone, if you will.
Well, that's just not what I have, and that's not what the town gave me on
Is anybody can clarify what the diagram shows, or should we wait?
I could show you what I got. I don't know if you can read it. But that's, that's what I got on my diagram. Probably ain't gonna read it.
Can I jump in here?
Yep.
That, that is correct. And I think maybe it's a question of elevation that we're talking about. Because, just because you're going closer down toward the water, it doesn't mean that the elevation doesn't change. The elevation of the system is raised well above the outlet culvert. I hope that clarifies things. Yes, it is closer to the, to the shoreline. Yes, it is closer to the water proximity, but the elevation of the system is well above where the water course is going.
And also, if I could, I'm Pat's husband, Nils. I, I was an excavating contractor for 20 years, so I have some, some background in this. And also, that septic system is in definitely the best and only part of the lot. The soils are the best to accommodate the system. It's a very small system. And there's no evidence that even after that great flood, that there was any water that got very far up that knoll, knoll. And so I, I think that argument is really is unfounded. I think the other part about the flood and the drainage and the sediment that you're concerned about, that you saw, and certainly can understand that concern. But I think you have to apply a little bit of reason and into that situation. Now, you've got, you have a paved road with a very significant hill on it with no drainage on the sides with a, with a very sandy shoulder. So all of that water is coming down the road. You've got the, the water at times going through the intermittent stream, but then you also have the water coming down from the right away for Langley Shores, and it's all converging in that one culvert. Well, except for the town road, kind of sheets across, but then most likely goes into that drainage square on the other side of the street. So you've got a confluence of three areas draining into there, not just what's coming through the property. Now, the other thing, excuse me, that really needs to be thought about is the culverts. It's shown in your diagram. There are two culverts running across the road. And I, I think it's reasonable that you, one could consider they're not sized properly. And in fact, when the DEP came out for a site review, we had a conversation about that, and they reflected the same feeling. And so that can cause backwater up in itself because if three areas are dumping into it in a catastrophic storm, clearly those culverts weren't designed to handle that. So I think to help eliminate one of your concerns even in the future is to have those culverts correctly sized and put new ones in.
My Mr. Pearson, that's fine. That's a separate, that's a separate conversation.
Right. Could I, could I interject something here? Our, our issue is not with the design of the septic system at all, and it's not design or any of the things that the family has gone through to get permits. It is that it is in the shoreline zone, and Acton is not following its ordinance. It has nothing to do with that. It's a great system. It's just that the, the ordinances are on the books for a reason, and we're asking you to actually follow the ordinances that you have on
Okay, well, ma'am, there, there is ordinances, but there is also applications for variances.
Yeah.
But these people have, well, there is room, there is room to, to work with somebody when they want to build a structure.
Yeah, absolutely. There was not, yeah, my understanding was there was no Yeah. My understanding is
Okay, do we have, is there any butters here?
Excuse me?
There any butters?
Could I say one more thing?
Sure.
Um, we're not questioning whether there's a variance process at all. That's another process. What we're questioning, what we're actually saying is that the permit itself should not have been signed until all of those issues about getting, if there was a variance that was needed from the town, all of that process needs to play out.
Okay, well. Okay, do we have any butters? Do you like to make a statement at all?
You do have one, Dwight.
Yes, Dwight Sourby, 200 Langley Shore Drive. Yep, all right, Dwight.
Hi. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm a little perplexed over the process here. So as an initial point of order, is this an appeal of an administrative decision, or is this an application for a variance?
This is an administrative appeal.
Fine, that's what I thought, as was the previous one.
Right.
So if the applicant, applicant either meets the requirements or doesn't meet the requirements, and in all honesty, the ZBA in this process really doesn't have the authority to ignore the, in this process, to ignore the statute or the ordinance and say, "Look, we like your design. It's high-tech. It's cool. We like it. It's far enough in our opinion." That would be part of a variance process. So much like the other one, either this decision that the CEO made is correct according to the ordinance, or it isn't. Either going back to the other one, and I know that's a dead issue because you already voted, but it's either a structure or it isn't. And in this case, either they meet the requirements or they don't. If you decline, if you, if you overrule the administrative decision, the applicant still has the, the ability to come back and ask for a variance and to make certain that they meet the criteria for the variance. That criteria for variance is spelled out in numerous court decisions. And that's not the function today. The function today is, was the decision correct or incorrect? And then just on some of the factual matters, again, I'm at 200 Langley Shore, so you've got Jeff's place, then Gail Wable, then what used to be my brother's place, and then ours. We've been flooded three times by that stream. And yes, part of, since 2003, part of that issue is the, the culverts down there are inadequate, absolutely. And if the plaintiff or the applicant here would like to, like to replace those, that'd be great. Or the town, somebody. But what happens is, the stream actually backs up along Langley Shore Drive and then overflows it and down over the hill. But that's almost a moot point when the more important point is really a legal point, which says either this is an administrative appeal or it's an application for a variance. In my humble opinion, the board does not have the power to morph this into a variance, nor does the part have the power to make a decision based on whether they like the plan or don't like the plan. It either meets the ordinance or it doesn't. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
All right, your, your, Dwight, your, your points is well taken and what, what they, in the package, they have a subsurface wastewater disposal system variance request from the state. So they've applied for different variances from the DEP, DHS, et cetera, and they've all been approved.
But they have not applied for a variance from the Town of Acton zoning ordinance.
At the time, the CEO at the time felt that that wasn't necessary and then go right to the state, which
Which goes, which goes right to the decision you need to make as to whether the CEO was correct or incorrect, not as to whether or not you would grant a variance because that's not on the table. They have to come back and, and, or if you want to morph it into that, then you got to start looking at the criteria for variance and go through that whole procedure. And I would submit that really needs to be a separate application to the town. They haven't asked for it yet.
Yeah.
What's Mr. Linkowski's opinion on this?
Well, I'm gonna say, Joe, let's, let's listen to your opinion on this conversation, please.
Okay, is it, am I, am I working?
Yep.
Yep.
Once again, what, what's going on here in, as far as I see it, is that there, there are two permitting processes. The, the code enforcement officer granted a building permit based on his determination that the structure that was going to be built on this property met the 75-foot setback in our ordinance. Our ordinance controls that portion of what's going on out on this site. The setback for the septic system is controlled by the subsurface, subsurface wastewater disposal rules of the state of Maine, which sets a different standard. It's actually a larger setback, but contains within it a procedure a procedure for seeking a variance from that setback. That's what's going on here. So the, uh, all of these issues that have been raised with regard to the runoff, the, the, the dangers, the, the, the possibilities of bad outcomes, if there's a big storm, all of that is appropriately directed to the person who makes the decision at the DHHHS, whether or not to grant a variance from the setback that's mandated by the, uh, subsurface water disposal. So the, the code enforcement officer did what he was supposed to do here. Uh, there wasn't a variance required from the town of Acton to locate the, the house being built on this property. It was within, it was, it met the 75-foot setback. He was not responsible, nor is the ZBA responsible for making decisions regarding the setback for the, for the septic system. That's a state issue. And it's been addressed by the state. And if, if, uh, the appellant's here are feeling we're harmed by the vision of the state, that's where the appeal should lie. They should be taking this issue up with the person who made the setback decision, uh, for the, for the subsurface wastewater town decision. That setback is determined by state law.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else on the ZBA have any questions at all? Okay. Okay, Mrs. Pearson, go ahead.
Um, am I gonna get a chance to? I don't know if the Del Cestos.
Yep, you're up the bat. We get to hear from you now.
Okay, so, um, I have, I have the slide presentation and I could go through part of that's applicable to, to this case. That I would like to go through if they haven't seen it. I'm sorry for everybody that has to sit through it again, but I, I think it explains a few things. You know, with regard to the governing authorities and the definition of the stream, uh, water course, tributary stream. It makes a difference for them granting, it's not a variance, by the way. It's called permit by rule, um, that was granted. So I'd like to just go through that and, and bear with me if, if you will, so that I can, uh, show the Del Cestos what I've put together. And maybe it'll put some, shed some light on, you know, how this all came about and why it is legal. Can I do that?
Absolutely.
Okay, might as well like to, uh, share my screen. Where's the screen, Mills? Where is it?
You're sharing.
All right here, I'm sorry, here it is. Okay, this is all pre-recorded, so it'll be easy. I'll try to go through it quick. If you want me to stop, just go ahead and say so.
Hello, everyone. My name is Pat Pearson, the owner of the lot at 155 Langley Shore Drive. The following slide presentations is my interpretation of my attempt. I'll clarify some key points to address for my neighbors and hopefully create a better understanding of the validity of the building permit that has been issued. Any questions pertaining to this appeal are best addressed by professionals present for this public hearing, including CEO, lawyer, and members of the Acton zoning board of appeals.
Yeah, so.
My primary defense and rebuttal for this appeal is the permanent question is in complete compliance with both the state rules and local ordinances interpreted by the Acton CEO, who had 24 years' experience on the job. He believes the permit meets and exceeds the state and local requirements. The professional people who issue permits are knowledgeable, qualified, and certified to do so. This slide is a summary of the sequence of applications and site reviews completed leading up to the building permit. I put the bottom statement in for those concerned about sedimentation. The timeline slide documents there were many checks and balances throughout the long process. This wasn't done overnight. It began with the purchase and sale on the property, September 13th, 2020. Boundaries were established by a professional land surveyor, both on September 17th and the 26th. After that, we contacted the DEP, filed an application for a permit by rule in the shoreline zone. We met for a site review on October 28th, and it, the permit was issued. Then there was a soils test, a septic design, on November 16th. A pre-treatment maintenance agreement was filed on December 22nd. And a building permit in shoreline zone. Tree removal permit were issued December 30th.
But then we also have.
Incidentally, I just wanted to mention, I obtained the shoreline zone certification in January 2021 to comply with the rules of DEP using best management practices when working in the shoreline zone to ensure best practices for erosion control. Here is some background information about the lot and the subdivision created in 1941. Like everyone else who has a camp in this subdivision, there is a lot of record. Number 1.4.7. This law is important for providing protection of a lot when no reasonable alternative exists under today's standard for building. This is a slide showing the location of the lot within the subdivision. Please note the location of the major water body, Brady's Lake, across Langley Shore Drive at the top. In addition to the camp location, minor water course and septic system, this map of the site plan denotes the location of the line separating approximately one-third shoreline zone to the north and the remainder in rural district to the south. It's also noted there are other water course runoffs running along the entire slope encompassing all the camp roads in the area. These two run along the lot lines as designed in the original subdivision. In this lot, it bisects across because it skirts around a high knoll.
I just want to point out, I hope you can still hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so, so right here, that we're talking about the 75-foot setback. This is where it applies. This is the camp, and this is the line, but tributary stream. Because it only applies within this, this area right here. And it's 115-plus feet away.
These are definitions from the Acton zoning ordinance. A list of definitions the water course did not meet include great pond, lagoon, stream, water body, wetland. Why? Because they didn't involve major water. And noting the difference between major water course and minor water course is significant to interpretation of the rules. So the closest thing that it could meet in the Acton book is a tributary stream. On page 33, is defined as a channel between defined banks, does not include the term stream as defined, and only applies to that portion located within the shoreline zone of the receiving water body or wetland. It's DEP regulated due to the 250 feet from the lake. It does not meet the criteria to be designated on a town map. Setbacks for building a structure located in the rural district are all in compliance, number 4.1.0.2, with the Acton ordinances that are regulated by the CEO without the need of a variance per number 1.4.7, which refers to non-conforming.
Okay. So I'll just continue. Yeah, no.
State and local authorities exist for natural resource protection and conservation. Let's just think about this. If the conditions did not meet the criteria according to the rules, it never would have been considered in the first place. Waste water treatment location is expertly designed to fit the topography and soils of the site.
So if I, if I could just jump in here and just add something about how wastewater treatment systems are, you know, designed. First, you have to, you have to dig a hole. And you have to see what the, what kind of, you know, there's different kinds of soil in the ground. What's, when one spot is not going to be the same 10 feet over. You know, it has to pass a test. So that's what we had to do first. And then the design had to fit the site. It had to fit the setbacks, it had to fit, you know, the location. There's quite a bit that goes into it. You just can't put a septic system anyplace. It just doesn't work like that. You have to have the soils to do the filtering.
This is a slide illustrating a synopsis of the criteria for the conditions met. The details of the conditions are addressed in the following slides, but this is just a synopsis. So I'll start with non-conforming lot of record. It was in existence since 1941. No reasonable alternative. The law provides 1.4.7.1. Those are local setbacks for the camp. Beats all of the visions, 4.3.3, that's local. Camp location's in the rural zone. It's not in shoreline zone, so that's local again. DEP permit by rule. Shoreline zone reduction setback to 25 feet from a minor water course. That's within the state's authority. Minimal impact, I'm going to remove three trees and replant native species to preserve the environment per best management practices. Septic system design and soils test, 30 inches far exceeds the 12-inch required minimum depth. Um, there's additional engineering to overcome the limitations, increased separation distance from a limiting factor, et cetera, and a maintenance agreement in the deed covenant at the York County Registry of Deeds. This is a minor water course, does not meet the definition of a, of a stream flowing out of a major water body. Inside shoreline zone, remember, is regulated by DEP. Outside shoreline zone, it's regulated by Acton.
So one other thing I, I want to add to this is, um, it was stated that, you know, just because you have a non-conforming lot, you're not, um, you don't have to listen. You, you don't have a license to not pay attention to what the local ordinances are. Well, it just so happens that it meets the local ordinances. 50 feet off the street, it meets it fine.
These photos were taken in January 2021 at the lower end of the lot. There are two views of the same location. The cars at the corner and the camp location proposed is uphill to the right. The DEP determination was an intermittent stream, a minor water course, because it doesn't flow out of a major water body. This section of the lot is in shoreline zone, and you can see the size of it.
So again, because it was an intermittent stream and the DEP made that determination, that was what had an effect on whether the system could be put there or not.
The system elevation is high on a knoll. In the event of a major rainfall, note the wastewater treatment system sites highly elevated on the knoll distance, subsurfaced, and located well beyond the reach of the drainage outlet to the culvert. Additionally, it's 190 feet from the lake. Here's a picture of the culvert on the right, and maybe it needs improvement. It's probable that insufficient erosion control during the construction located uphill contributed to the soil washing into the lake, as mentioned in a letter to the state of the second aggrieved party. Cherry Culver and Jeffrey Del Cesto's camp is located further downhill at the lake shoreline.
So I guess today they don't allow two culverts. They want one culvert, so it's unobstructed, and it should be sized correctly.
The photo on the left shows a close-up of the system location. It's a pretty flat area. The photo on the right, um, will show you the knoll. The location of the system is up in the upper left-hand corner, above the sign to the left. This is not going to compromise the water quality of Gris Lake. The water coming out of the tank is almost potable, as I'll show you on the next slide. The singular green is a three-tank chambers design, which includes first, a pre-treatment chamber, second, an aeration chamber for aerobic treatment, the third is a clarification chamber of almost potable water coming to, out of the tank, exiting to a fourth, uh, part of the system, which is a concrete chamber leach field for anaerobic in-ground filtration of the wastewater. Typical systems, uh, just have a, a tank collecting the solid and the liquid waste. It's directly exiting to a second form of treatment to the leach field for anaerobic, uh, processing. This is a photo taken outside of shoreline zone, which is two-thirds of the property. Note that the water was not running in late September. It's dry. This slide illustrates the governing authority as applies to the lot concerning the tributary stream. Inside shoreline zone is regulated by the state. Outside shoreline is regulated by town ordinance. It's in the rural district, therefore it does not meet the criteria to be included on the town maps and regulating water course. And the setbacks for the shoreline zone do not apply in the rural district. The map colors orange and yellow show the two zones with different governing authorities. And the diagonal line show the lot location of the aggrieved parties. Now notice that Dennis has two-acre house lot, 47. I'm in the middle. And then there is a two-acre vacant lot with a 60-foot foundation that's capped. And then there's a 50-acre parcel that Dennis owns. Cherry Culver and Jeffrey Del Cesto are located closer to the lake as shown. Photo on the far left is an overview from Google. And it shows the amount of trees that are on the lot. Trees and vegetation are important part, components of erosion control. And those who know me may call me a naturalist and a tree hugger. On the right, it shows, uh, a pseudo-plan for replanting of native species and what the corner might look like where the sign is located. The site plan includes removing as few trees as possible. In closing, I'd like to assert that there are no hidden agendas and nothing illegal was done here. My husband Mills and I are just looking for a cabin to enjoy retirement on the property we purchased. This presentation is a rebuttal to an administrative appeal. It's my hope that these slides have helped all interested parties conclude the rules were diligently followed. Main state rules were followed, permits were issued, Acton zoning ordinances were complied with, and correctly interpreted by the certified CEO who was employed in Acton for 24 years. I really think he knew what he was doing. We've been residents of this town for 33 years. You know, I can't really think about wanting to live anyplace else. The bumper sticker says, "It's God's country." Mills and I share the same desire to enjoy and protect a natural resource. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Pearson. Does anybody have any questions? Who's EBA? No, okay. Mike, acting as the Acton CEO, do you have any questions or concerns about anything?
No, no, I do know. I, I actually feel very comfortable with the treatment system that they, that they are utilizing as far as the tank. In the shoreline zone, every tank has to be entirely sealed per, um, subsurface wastewater. per, um, subsurface wastewater rules. Um, I've seen this type of treatment used in, in several different applications. They work well and they have low ma- they're, it's low maintenance. It's a once, once a year cleaning and the effluent is extremely clean coming out.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Any problem?
Okay, Mr. Pearson, on, on the design, on, on, on the plans, it says it's just an inch and a half pipe going from the tank to the leach field itself, right?
Is that, yes, yes.
Inch and a half, okay. And then the concrete chambers that you have, um, on your plans are just, it's just, is it two four by sixteen or?
Chamber. They're four by eight chambers.
Four by eight chambers. There's two of those.
Yes.
So the whole area of the chambers is just four by sixteen.
Yes. In the ground.
In the ground. And you're adding?
We're putting a retaining wall.
You're putting a retaining wall and you're adding fill to raise, to raise them all higher?
It's, no, it's not, doesn't go higher. It's just the, the fill extension. It's, it's off after, after on the edge of those chambers. You put stone underneath, put stone and, and then you, um, seal it up.
Right, okay.
It's going to be, um, you know, pretty much in the ground. It's a pretty level area. It's just going to have a retaining wall just to, to, uh, secure everything and make sure everything is, is put in correctly. It's just an added, um, precaution.
Okay. My Mr. De Soto and um, Ms. Culver, do you have any questions at all?
Yeah, I have a couple of quick.
Mrs. Pearson?
Um, on, on slide twenty that shows the house, the above-ground septic system, and then the septic, um, are you able to put that back up? If not, I can just talk my question through.
Okay, sorry about that. I couldn't get to the mute button. Um, slide twenty is, uh, the details of Dennis's letter. So can you just give me a better idea?
So the title at the, it's a, it's a map of the lot site plan. It has three lines. One, it says septic, septic system leach field and it has an arrow. Camp location and it has an arrow. And then it says, note the yellow line separating the, um, shore zone from the rural district. You know that one?
Yes, okay.
Uh, it's.
I can bring that up.
All right. So you pointed out a line. And you said, note, this line is a hundred and fifteen feet setback. I don't think we're talking about a setback between that and the building. I think we're talking about a setback between the stream and either the septic field and, and the above-ground septic system.
Right, and, and I'm trying to explain that on the building permit, when it says seventy, the house must be set seventy-five feet back from the stream. Um, this is, this is what I'm talking about. And when you're referring to the setback from the stream for the septic system, it's a totally different thing. It's a totally different, uh, regulating body. And this is where the permit by rule comes in. The setback goes down to twenty-five because there is no room here. Because of the lot, a non-conforming lot, um, this is how, this is how you rectify getting, you know, some, um, what am I trying to say? This is how the, the building codes are satisfied under today's standards, because there's just no way you can, you, on a small lot that you can do that. They, they have to give you some kind of leeway to be able to put this in. It's meeting the setback that, that they allowed. That's for the septic system. It's just totally different. Seventy-five feet applies to the house. Does that answer your question?
I think we're gonna have to just disagree with that, but move on. Um, the, 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 from this slide, um, eight forward, you, you list that we're not a Butters.
I do apologize for that because on my map, you're not a Butters. But on your map, it looks like my, uh, the corner of my lot goes well into the street. I think, you know, you just told me that, you know, I own into the, into the tar quite a bit more. So I do apologize for that.
Owns half of the street. We own it, but we can't do anything in the last twenty-two and a half feet of it. That's another law. Um, so all right, I.
Mr. De Soto, did you get a copy of the subsurface wastewater disposal system variance request? Did you ever get a copy of that?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, we absolutely did. But again, we're not, we're not questioning the fact about the variance for the subsurface waste disposal. We're, we're, we're questioning that it's in the shoreline zone. And our, our take on it is that it is a structure that is being built in the shoreline zone. So that's why it's an administrative appeal for the, the granting of the permit. Not anything about the system itself. It, it looks like a wonderful system. But it's, it's in the shoreline zone and it is a structure that's in the ground.
Okay. But they were giving, they replied for a, a variance and they were approved for variance.
Correct.
From which?
From the state, not from the town though, right?
Okay.
But from the state. Town doesn't regulate that.
I think ordinances could be interpreted multiple ways on that. I think that's at least our reading of it is it does fall in under the town to, to, and can town laws can be more stringent than the state.
Okay.
It's a nation.
Does anybody else have anything to, to ask or questions?
I just, can I ask one more question about location of something? Where is the exact location of those three containers that make up the system? Is that above ground?
That's going to be up either. Well, go ahead, Mrs. Pearson, you can.
Yeah, that, that, those three chambers are in one tank. Like you have a septic tank too. Yours is just one big tank. This is a big, bigger tank and it has three separate chambers in it. And it's located in the ground just like yours. Is that your question?
And, and it's by the house more so than?
Yes.
By the house.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All you need is going in the ground is a four by sixteen concrete chamber. That's made with just basically what's going to be coming out is water. The way that our system is. So it's. Okay, all right.
Dan?
Yeah.
Uh, can you ask Mr. Pearson to put that slide back up? It shows, uh, uh, the, the last slide that she had up of the map.
The map?
Yes.
With the distances?
Nope. Uh, well, yeah. On that map, I see three red, uh, rectangles. One is identified as the camp location. Uh, the next one is not identified as anything. I don't know what it is.
Well, that's in the package. Uh, he's wanting to put a, a small bridge or a walkway, so and the area above that is for like a handicap walkway, so he can access that area. And that's something that, that's, they're going to have to work with the CEO about.
So the septic system and leach field are all the way at the top of that slide.
Correct. Right where she's got her cursor on, right there.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, without, uh, anybody else, uh, requesting, uh, some comments or anything, we're going to go ahead and, uh, consider this hearing falls for deliberation.
Make a motion. We close the, uh, session for deliberation.
Second.
Okay, motion is here now closed, or the hearing is here now closed and we'll open this up.
Let, let's vote, Dan.
Yeah, let's go ahead and vote.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, so we're going to make a vote to either, uh, uh, grant the appeal or deny the appeal. So a motion is if you say yes, you're appealing, you're, you gotta make this clear because we're on Zoom. So.
I make, I, I make a motion, Dan, we deny the appeal.
Okay, I second. Based on a fact that we have at hand. Yeah, I, 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 I also vote to reject the repeal. Okay, so Dennis? So no, I'm a no.
I'm a no.
Lois?
I'm a no.
No, okay, Brandy?
No.
Okay.
Again, I, I think you're kind of missing this.
Oh, go ahead.
Is, uh, does everybody's vote no? I made a motion to vote to deny the appeal. So a no vote would be granting the appeal. I'm just clarifying for you.
Okay, I put that differently.
Yeah, I was going by what he was saying, so, Dan, so.
So. All right, let's make a motion to deny the application based on the, uh, facts. It was approved by DEP in DHS. DHHS.
And I vote yes.
And I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Ron?
I vote no. Ron.
And I vote yes. Okay. So the appeal submitted by, uh, Mr. Del Sato and Jerry Culver has been dismissed.
Any further business, Dan?
Uh, not on this, no. So make a motion to, uh, make a motion to, uh, adjourn.
Before you, before you do that, when's the next meeting?
Yeah, that's something.
No, but, well, no, but we have to hang on and, and, and do our second meeting. Or third meeting.
Third meeting.
Just stay, just stay on.
So we're not actually adjourning the meeting?
No.
Okay, good.
We're just moving on to the next subject.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dan?
Okay, so next topic is we need to approve the meetings from the last, approve the meeting from the last, uh, meeting we had.
Dan, Mr. Lin, Dan, I'm not sure if you can hear, Mr. Linkowski is calling for you.
No, I can't hear him.
Dan, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes.
I just was going to say, I don't think you need me anymore for this one. I'm just taking out this one to let everybody know that and thank you very much.
You're, you're getting the last words in while you can, so you get that bonus, right?
That's right. I think that was, what, was that fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen. We'll round it up. Bakers, or round it out. Bakers dozen.
Bye, Joe.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank, thank you very much.
Make a motion. We approve the minutes of the last ZBA meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, so the those minutes were now official. Okay, now Jim, you want to go on and read what you have for us?
So we received an email from Derwood Parkinson, who is a land use attorney that, um, because Mr. Linkowski was essentially stepping into the CEO spot, uh, Derwood Parkinson is a backup land use attorney that we often use. Um, he has been used for procedural advice for the upcoming Julia. Uh, with everything that's going on with both sides, we've reached out to him with, uh, some questions just to make sure that everything's being done properly. Uh, he received an email from the attorneys that filed the appeal and I'm just going to read it to you. It says, hi, Derwood. I'm writing to follow up on the email dated February eighth regarding the scheduling of the February twenty-seventh Acton Board of Appeals hearing on the appeal by Julia for code enforcement decision. We understand that the town would like to see a resolution to this matter and so would both parties, Martella Estates and Julia. To that end, representatives from both parties have recently had two conferences to outline their differences and issues and to offer passive resolutions for outstanding issues. The parties are making good progress and we are working through those issues. If the parties succeed in reaching an agreement, there would be no need for this hearing. And further local land use review proceedings in this matter should be more focused and less diverse. To allow these discussions to continue, both Martell Associates, Martella Estates and Julia asked for a continuance of the hearing to Saturday, May first, just over sixty days. This continuance should not pose any additional legal cost to the town. And if, as we believe, the party discussions result in an agreement that will eliminate the need for the hearing, we will ultimately save the town from having to incur legal costs for representation on the CEO and zoning board at that hearing. We are requesting a similar extension from the Maine Department of Protection. So one of the questions that, that, um, Dan and I had a conversation with Derwood this morning was that, um, if you decide to grant this continuance on May first, um, then we can send out notices now so that we don't have to, um, actually, no, that's not going to work. We're doing, uh, awesome. What, remember, what, what he said was that if we, if we continued it on that January twenty-seventh meeting, we wouldn't have to send out any notices because essentially everybody would be present. But we won't send anything out until, um, until it gets, you know, a, a lot closer to May first, but neither here nor there. He is, they're saying at this point that both parties in agreement and they're looking for another continuance. So that's your decision.
Where's Dan?
I'm right here.
Hey, we can't, I can see you. I can hear you, but I can't see you.
Oh, okay.
There you are. Hey, question. Does it have to be a Saturday? You know as well as I do, it's getting close to that time of year.
Yeah.
They chose a Saturday because that was the date that this committee originally chose. You, your meeting was scheduled for Saturday, January twenty-seventh, and they were trying to be, um, cooperative to follow the suit that you guys had done.
Can I correct you, Jennifer?
Yeah.
I don't think it was January.
February.
February.
February. But nevertheless, this committee in an open meeting that, that, that they've all reviewed was very adamant about the schedules and, and the committee chose it to be on a Saturday, so they were trying to be respectful of that and continuance to another Saturday. I'm sure every attorney involved would rather it wasn't a Saturday, but they were following suit, Lois.
Chairman?
Yeah, Dan.
I, I would, I, I think a Saturday is going to cost the town of Acton a lot of money. They have it on a Saturday, so if, if we can go back to them and ask if they want to do it like on a Wednesday, afternoon, Wednesday evening.
Well, I think that if, if you guys decide to grant the continuance around that day, then you just pick the day and we will tell them that we granted the continuance. After, you know, careful consideration, we chose not to do it on a Saturday. This is the day. I'm certain they're going to be happy with it not being on a Saturday.
Does anybody have any? Does anybody feel strongly about not giving them a continuance? Does anybody have any concerns about the?
I don't mind giving them a continuance as long as we can find a different day or different. Wish it was sooner, but you know how that goes.
Well, we can bump it back, you know, try the fifth, which is a Wednesday.
That works for me, Dan.
Of May?
You want to do like a six P M?
Yep.
Or a seven? I mean, if we do, if we do this hearing, it's going to be a long, long, long meeting. I mean, you're looking probably today, like, it's probably going to be like four hours.
Yeah, especially these two applicants. And you'll have, I mean, you can certainly agree to table it, you know, to allow it to go for X amount of hours and then, and then have your own continuance, um. But you're right. I mean, if it gets to a point where you guys hear it, it is going to be extremely long of both sides.
Yeah, and this is all going to be a lawyer talk. It's going to be a nightmare.
So remember the meeting is still on and being recorded. Um, so, well, did you, what time did you, did you guys decide for May fifth?
Six P M.
Okay, so can we have a, an actual motion?
Make a motion that we continue the Julia, uh, application for, uh, uh, appeal, uh, to May, was it sixth?
Fifth. May fifth.
Fifth, May fifth at six P M.
I make it, second.
All those in favor, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I will notify the, I'll notify the parties and speak to the zoning, the land use secretary.
And also have to make a notification that Bob Anderson has stepped down from vice chair.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Well, he resigned from the committee, so that kind of takes them off everything.
Oh, no.
Unfortunate.
Unfortunately.
Do we have to replace him or we all set?
Well, the Board of Selectment, what they've done is they've moved an alternate up. It's going to, the alternate is going to be, the alternate is going to be Ryan Gleason. The way that they do alternates generally is they look at two of them and they decide which one has seniority. In this case, both of the alternates have the same seniority. So what they did was just gone, went alphabetical. I mean, there's, you know.
I really didn't mean, I know you are alternate, but I meant as far as VP, do we have to?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Or not? Sorry, Brian.
Okay.
Dan?
Yes.
Do we have to replace the VP or not?
Uh, that I do not know. So I'm going to find out the answer to that question. And then once we re, once we come to another meeting, we can go from there.
I nominate Lois.
Yeah, right, Brandy, I hear you. I don't know how this is done.
Make a motion to. Go home.
Dan?
Yes.
I have one bit of information that I want to make the ZBA aware of. I am currently under subpoena for jury duty the month of April and May. I do not know what I'm going to be able to attempt. I will definitely try to make my obligation to this DBA, but I may not be able to.
I appreciate that.
Unfortunately, I've already done one, one tour of jury duty in Alfred. This one is not going to be in Alfred. It's going to be in Portland. And it's not grand jury duty. It's pedic jury duty, which means you sit and wait, and if you get called, then you go hear a case.
Right, right. All right, well, keep your fingers crossed.
Well, hopefully we don't have to do ZB, hopefully we don't have to do Zoom next time we have face on.
You can count on being on Zoom for a good, long time.
Yeah, another year, probably.
Oh, you guys are no fun.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
All right, let's make a, let's make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Bye. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.